To this meeting of Akron City Council. And this evening, for prayer, we will have Pastor DeJohn Kelker.
Kelker.
Okay, but first, we will do the roll calls.
I don't think he's scared them.
Okay.
I think Mr. Freeman's gonna fill it.
All righty, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna have the clerk read the roll right now.
Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Mosley Samples, Neil, Imovian, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Looks like everyone is here. Am I correct? Okay.
Correct.
And is the pastor in the audience for a chance? If not, I will ask Consulman Freeman. Is the pastor's here?
I apologize.
Oh, I apologize. Please, um, thank you for being here this evening. Please introduce yourself. I think the microphone is on.
Two, two.
Yes.
Two, two.
Perfect.
I used to emcee back in the days.
I wish I had done that really good. Yeah, please lead us in prayer in any of the audience that would care to join us, and then we will do the pledge to the flag.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
If we could bow our head, we close our eyes on a sin-sick world. We bow our heads slightly, showing reverence to Almighty God. If you repeat after me in silence, I'll offer a supplication. In the most holy name of Almighty God, the Benevolent, the Merciful, we thank you for your love, for your mercy. We thank you for wrapping your arms around all the beloved citizens of Akron. We ask that you endow us with a double portion of your spirit to make sure that our dialogue, our discourse, and our energies are universally genuine, and that we speak forthright with each other, that we're honest, that we come clean, and that we offer the utmost respect, that we treat each other in the way that we all would like to be treated. We pray this prayer in the name of all of your messengers and servants, from Abraham to Noah to Jesus to Moses to Mohammed. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will read the minutes from the previous meeting.
Tell them to sit right there.
Oh, we have places, Michelle. Michelle, we have places right up front for our guests, and we'll hold just one moment. Nice to have you here. Okay, the clerk will now read the minutes from the previous meeting.
You have one more.
Okay. Now the clerk will read the minutes from the previous meeting. I bet you're all ready now, aren't you?
Okay. Minutes from the November 20th meeting, 2017. Council convened in a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Keith in the chair. All members were present. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were read and approved. Neil abstained. Reading of petitions and communications, passage of the consent agenda, report of standing in special committees, passage and referral of new ordinances and resolutions, representation from various departments and divisions, public speaking period, note for your business on a motion by Fusco. Council adjourned at 7:33 PM to reconvene in regular session on November 27th, 2017, or a special call.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, we will take a voice roll call.
Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples. Neil.
Aye.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we will move on to the letters, the petitions and the communications with council.
Just so everybody knows, I put a copy of this on your desk so you guys can keep track of liquor establishments renewing their licenses. In case anybody has problems, you'll know when they're due to come up for a hearing, if you want a hearing. Item number one, notice of stop, C2, C2X liquor permits to NMJ Incorporated, 1354 Vernon Oldham Boulevard.
Attention, Word Three, Consulwoman Somerville.
Notice of an Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control that a hearing scheduled for December 5th for Georgie's Pub Incorporated and Georgie's Girl LLC, 1312 Britton Road and 1306 Britton Road, have been continued. A notification will be sent when they are rescheduled.
Attention, Word Two, Consulman Kilby. Now we will go to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing and hearing none, we will do a roll call.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Sample.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes. This evening, we have visitors that have come from out of town, and Michelle has been good enough, along with Sam, to bring us our guests this evening. So I would like to take a vote of, to take things out of order this evening, so that we have time to meet our visitors before we begin with our legislation. I would like to make a motion that we switch around our agenda right now and take things out of order. Is there a second to my motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, we will now move to introducing Michelle, I think would be first. Hi, Michelle, good to see you. You've had a very, very busy week, I can tell. This is Michelle Wilson. She is continually working with our friends that are from out of state, out of the nation, and out of the country. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle to tell us who's here to visit us this evening.
Thank you very much, Marilyn.
Hit that button. Hit that little red button there, right on top. There we go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. On behalf of Global Ties Akron, I want to say thank you to Marilyn and to the city council members and to the mayor's board and everything here, too. We're very fortunate to be part of a welcoming city, which is a national movement, and are both of our city, our council, and NGOs, and as we've been talking a lot, public-private partnerships. We just passed our welcoming plan, initial stage one, and one of the things that is very important to us is to welcome our international delegations when they're here. In addition to that, we welcome international students and scholars and refugees and immigrants to our city. So one of the great fortunes I have is working with the U.S. State Department's International Visitor Leadership Program, and today we have a delegation from Kosovo. I haven't been many places in the world, but I have been to Kosovo, so I was very fortunate to be able to visit several of the cities that our guests are from. So I highly recommend it if you get a chance to go to Kosovo. It's one of our youngest countries in the world, and our delegation that's here today is really working on workforce development and youth, and helping with connecting the public-private sectors, education, and job opportunities. That's something we discuss a lot here in Akron, and that we've really moved forward a lot in the last several years. So we've been able to share some of that with our groups today, with our group today at Canexus, which I know you're all familiar with, and we went over to Bokdo High School to look at their job training programs, and Superintendent David James joined us for that meeting as well, and then just met with the mayor, and we're here this evening. They'll be going to the Global Business Accelerator in Akron tomorrow, and Carpentry Guild program in Richfield. So our delegation includes Mr. Drin Horasia, just put your hand up for us, who is a senior policy advisor and works with the Ministry of Labor and Social Welfare, and that's more at the country level. And then we have Mr. Vucina Jakovik. He is a mayor of a small municipality that is close to Metro Vitza, which is kind of like the gateway between Serbia and Kosovo. So they face a lot of challenges since the war in trying to redevelop and to create a job industry, because they were really dependent on mining industry. So like, we went through our loss with the rubber and, you know, manufacturing industry. They're going through a lot of that right now, trying to rebuild job opportunities. And then Mr. Furkan Rada, and he is a CEO and entrepreneur with the Fashion Network Industries, and they have operations in several cities across the country. So thank you for welcoming us here, and if you have any questions for myself or for our delegates, then thank you. Do you want to leave any time for questions, or do you wanna?
First of all, if you have a cellphone, make sure you turn it off. And if you're missing one, it's up here. That's why I wasn't sure how to turn it off. It's not mine. So anyhow, if you're missing a cellphone, we have one up here. We're just trying to figure. I thought I had turned it off. Are there any questions for our guests that are here this evening?
We are gonna welcome our mayor up real quick to send greetings from his city as well.
Look at how excited he is, Michelle, to do this.
Hello.
Hi. Hello. First of all, good evening.
Good evening.
I want to give you my apologies, because my English is not very well. I am Vucina Jankovic, and I'm a mayor of one small municipality in the north of Kosovo. Well, for me, it's really honor to be here, and from the first hand, how to say, have a possibility to see your meeting of the council session.
Uh huh.
Well, in the name of the all group, I would like to thank you, and if you have a possibility to come in Zvetcham, please, I would like to be your host.
Mayor, tell us the name of your city.
My city is Zvetcham. It's a small municipality in the north of Kosovo. Almost 98% of the population is a Kosovo Serbs. Less than 2% is Albanians. And before the war, almost all population worked in a mining factory, trapcha. Now, that people is without job, and I, as a mayor, must find some solution, and with vocational education training, give him a possibility for new skills, and find him some new job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam President, I also would like to tell you we have a few navigators who are with us today as well. One is Mr. Greg Burnside, who has been with the tour. They're gonna be traveling until December the 1st. And another local navigator that we have is Dr. Lakeisha Ransom from the University of Akron. So we appreciate that. I know Dr. Albanese, Dr. Ransom have all made sure that this was a great tour here in Akron.
Okay, thank you, Sam, so much, and a special thank you to Global Ties. I can't remember the last time I went to Kosovo, because I haven't been there, but thank you for coming to us and for sharing with us throughout the day. Not only did we host, but I'm sure that you shared back and gave us much to feel rich about. So thank you very much for coming this way. And I believe that our consulman has found a friend because of his background and where he's from, his heritage, so this is nice, that they've made a connection. Okay, should we move on? Again, Michelle, thank you so much, and we will move on with the rest of our agenda. Okay, so what we have next, any of you that are following along, we now go to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda was brought before us last week, and we take some time on it to review things that we have on it. So right now, we are taking a look at the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So.
You make the motion to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will vote on the consent agenda? Because we didn't do that, did we?
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did. I like to do.
But I didn't want to interrupt.
I like to do some things twice, because our visitors may not have caught that, you know. Okay, now we're going to move into our legislation that we've already had introduced to us in the past, and so I'm going to turn this over to rules and Consulwoman Somerville. What are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee requests time.
Time will be granted. We'll move to planning. Consulman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
Yes, thank you, President Keith. Time on one through, including eight.
One through eight, time.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull the committee for an adverse report on item number eight. Excuse me, on item number nine.
On item number nine, there has been a request to pull this committee for an adverse report. Please do that.
Thank you. Imovian?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Swirsky?
Aye.
Okay. That is confirmed that it is an adverse report. So the committee has an adverse report on number nine. Do we need to go to the Consulwoman?
He'll take it.
Okay, oh, go ahead then, Consulman Fusco.
Would you like a description?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes, this is Electronic Message Center, 328 South Main Street. I know the ward council representative is against this. You know, in a time whenever we're reinventing, if you will, our main street, our downtown area, we've got to make sure that the signage and such is consistent with our goals and objectives, and we don't believe that this is.
Thank you, Consulman Fusco. We will now vote as a council on the adverse report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Sample.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
It has passed as an adverse report for number nine. Number 10, Consulman Fusco.
Report of committee's file 10.
We will file number 10.
Report of the committee on 11 is favorable. We ask for suspension of rules.
The committee has a favorable report for number 11, is requesting suspension of rules. All those in favor of suspension of rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Consulman Fusco, would you like to speak on this one also?
Yes, this is one that's been on our agenda for a while here. This is an expansion of an existing business that's actually located on Arlington Street. And this is a property that's located on Talbot and McKinley as well, that would permit this longstanding business to expand. And this is, it's been recommended approval. I don't know if the ward council person has any comments or not in reference to this. Do note and note that East Techard Neighborhood Development Corporation weighed in on this, and they've done quite a bit of development in the area, and they, too, are in favor of this as well.
Okay, thank you. Consulwoman Mosley Samples, would you like to speak on this one? No? Okay, we will now vote as a council on this one. All in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Consulman Fusco, on number 12, I would imagine we're gonna file that one?
Yes, file, please.
Okay, we will file 12.
Time on the balance.
Time on 13 through 22. Okay, Public Utilities, Consulman Neil, what are the wishes of your committee?
Madam Chair, committee's request is continue time.
Okay, time will be granted. Okay, and that is all to come before us on the regular legislation. Now we will go into the new legislation.
Okay, item number one, offered by Freeman for Somerville, ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent to enter into a contract after publicly advertising for bids for proposals for the purchase of real and personal property insurance, boiler insurance for all city properties to cover a period March 1st, 2018 to March 2023, approving specifications therefore and declaring emergency.
Consulwoman Somerville, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee requests consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number two, offered by Somerville, ordinance authorizing purchasing agent to enter into a contract without the formality of advertising for bids for the purchase of support and hardware maintenance for three uninterruptible power supplies in three city data centers from Wadsworth Solutions, approving specifications therefore and declaring emergency.
Consulwoman Somerville, what are the wishes of your committee?
The committee requests consent agenda.
Okay, this item will also be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number three, offered by Mayor Horigan, ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated to apply for and to accept, if awarded, funding from the Bloomberg Philanthropies 2017 Mayor's Challenge Grant Program and declaring emergency.
Consulwoman Somerville, what are the wishes of your committee?
The committee requests consent agenda.
Thank you. And we'll put that one on the consent agenda with the prayer that we get it also, and continuing to move along in that process.
Item number four, offered by Fusco, ordinance approving the sale of vacant city-owned properties pursuant to the city's A Lot for a Little program in order to facilitate the productive reuse of the property and in furtherance of Mayor Horigan's objectives of activating unutilized spaces for the benefit of the community and reducing the cost to the city and the taxpayers in maintaining vacant lot. Determining said property is not needed for public use and declaring emergency.
Thank you. Consulman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
Consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number five, offered by Fusco, ordinance approving the sale of various city-owned properties of Jar Enterprises Ohio LLC, determining said properties are not needed for public use and declaring emergency.
Consulman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
Consent agenda.
This item shall also be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number six, offered by Fusco, ordinance authorizing the purchase of 282 and 1/2 and BL Kelly Avenue for the CSO Rack 3 Kelly Green Project and declaring emergency.
Consulman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
Consent agenda.
This item will also be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number seven, offered by Sims and Fusco, ordinance authorizing the mayor to apply for grant funding through the AMETS for transportation alternatives set aside and resurfacing funds that are available for use in the city's Akron improvement projects to the Heritage Trail, Watery Road, and Hawkins Avenue and declaring emergency.
Thank you. Consulwoman Sims, what are the wishes of your committee?
The committee's report is favorable. We ask for suspension of the rules.
The committee has a favorable report. They're asking for suspension of the rules. We will now all vote on a favorable report with suspension of rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Consulwoman Sims.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As stated, this legislation will allow the mayor or his designated to pursue grant funding through the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Studies for improvement and resurfacing projects. Each one of the initiatives could potentially garner the city $700,000 for each product. If we're successful in securing these funds, I think it will go a long way with advancing some of the quality of life and improvement initiatives the city is working on, particularly the Rubber City Heritage Trail and a number of resurfacing projects that our city is much in need of for that. I would ask for its passage.
Okay. The committee had a favorable report. We also agreed. All those in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will take a roll call on that particular ordinance.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco.
Freeman.
Aye.
Hope.
Fusco.
Aye.
Okay.
Kammer. Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Sample.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swirsky.
Aye.
This ordinance passes.
Okay. Item number eight, offered by Neil, ordinance authorizing the purchasing agent after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract or contracts for the sale of trees on properties in Georgia County and declaring emergency.
Thank you so much. Consulman Neil, what are the wishes of your committee?
Madam Chair, committee's request is consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, item number nine. Item number nine, offered by Mayor Horigan and Kammer, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract or contracts after publicly advertising for bids for the purchase of miscellaneous materials and services needed by the Departments of Public Safety for a period of time not to exceed three years, approving specifications therefore and declaring emergency.
Consulman Kammer, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is consent agenda, please.
This item shall be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, item number 10, offered by Kammer, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Interval Brotherhood to provide comprehensive residential drug and alcohol treatment to eligible individuals and declaring emergency.
Consulman Kammer, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is consent agenda, please.
This item shall also be placed on the consent agenda. And we have completed all of the new legislation that is before us today. We will now move into the portion of our meeting that we call the public comment period. If you wish to speak to council during this time, you can approach the podium. Please sign in, then state your full name, spell your last name. You do not have to tell us your address, but your address needs to be on the form there. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and germane to council business. Speakers should refrain from making personal attacks. Anyone who breaches a quorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. So if there is anyone in the audience that would like to address council, you may come up to the podium now.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Gooden. I'm with the Joe Siggford Basketball, I mean, Joe Siggford Basketball Classic. I'm also the Executive Director of Athletes for Better Education. Athletes for Better Education is a tutoring, drug, and alcohol prevention sports program that's been around for 35 years. We've collaborated last year for our first annual Joe Siggford Basketball Classic. Within this classic, we have 10 high schools. We have three city schools. The other seven schools are from Ken McKinley, Revere, some other counties and stuff. My concerns is not a concern, I just want to bring you up to date, that Mr. Malkovich invited us here today, which is a former Central Harvard student, and Veronica Sims, she's also a former student. We would like to bring you guys up to date that it's this Saturday, December 2nd, at the New Firestone High School. And we would really love for you councilmen and the other people to attend this event. Last year, we had roughly about, we had about, we had 10 teams. We averaged about 750 people per game. We raised roughly about $7,000 to $8,000. With those dollars that we do, we give 60% of those proceeds back to Akron Public Schools for a Joe Siggford Scholarship. Anybody can apply for the scholarship that's within Akron Public Schools. The other 40% goes to Athletes for Better Education. With Athletes for Better Education, what we do, we run a tutoring, drug, and alcohol prevention alternative violence program within the city of Akron, usually at the House of the Lord or Perkins Middle School. Last year, we had roughly about 140 kids that we had in our program for free. And take in mind, we only had like 5,000 or 6,000. Russ, he works with us also, collaborating with us with T-shirts and stuff like that. But we really need your help to come out and support this program. And it's going a long way with a few dollars. But when people see the upper echelon of people in the city there, they jump in. I mean, we've been at it for a long time, and we need just a little help for you guys if you get a chance to come and check out the event this Saturday. It's at Akron Firestone High School. The first game starts at 11:00 a.m. And we got all good games. Ken McKinley Girls, they're ranked number one in the state of Ohio, they're playing Firestone Girls. And it goes all the way to 8 o'clock. Barberton High School plays Booktoe High School, the 7 o'clock game. I also brought some flyers to leave for your information, okay? And on that flyer has my phone number if anybody needs to contact me. And this is Myles Meadows, he's also a guy that's, these are board members, and Jeff Henderson, okay? At Akron Public Schools, there's a board. They're our pilot, they back us 100%. I want to thank you for your time.
No, I think we want to thank you for your dedication and the gentleman that came with you, for the dedication to the youth in our community. And you have taken a little bit of dollars and really stretched it a long way. So thank you so much for all that you have done in the past and what you continue to do. So that's this Saturday. Okay. It's all, the floor is all yours.
My name is Steve Gnome, N-O-M-E. I'm a retiree from the Akron Health Department, retired after 32 and 1/2 years. Hopefully you remember I was here about two weeks ago, and I expressed my concern that the city's plan for the supplemental medical benefits for retirees requires that the spouse be receiving OPR's insurance first. Now, OPR's insurance for a spouse who didn't work for the city for 30 years is nearly $14,000. Now, to take $14,000 out of, I know out of my pension and out of most people's pension is a serious hit, and it's just not possible. So I had sent some questions to Wendy Weaver, the employee benefits manager, and I asked how many retirees and their spouses were utilizing the city's health insurance coverage currently. And I got my response from Donald Rice, and he said there were about 1,100 people enrolled in the retirees supplemental medical benefit. Now, if every of them all were married, that would mean there were 550 retirees and 550 spouses. I don't imagine that to be right. So there's somewhere less than 550 spouses who are getting hit with this loss of affordable insurance. And one of, the, I asked also, I said, the active employees and their spouses, they can use the same insurance, I understand it's the same insurance, as a primary coverage. Why can't the spouses of retirees use it as primary coverage? And he responded that basically you passed a law that said you can't do that. So to me, that's an arbitrary kind of thing. You say, well, we're just going to say these spouses can't be covered. And I'm guessing, I don't know the exact figures, I'm guessing that most of these spouses are women. So what you've got is women who are less than 65 years old, but I'll bet probably more than 60, who are losing their affordable insurance coverage. And I asked, how much does it cost the city to provide insurance for the retirees and their spouses? And he indicated the cost for each retiree and spouse varies, so he couldn't give me an answer. I guess what I would have done is taken the whole cost of retirees and spouses and divided it by 1,100 and said, it averages out to about this amount. But, so I don't know what it actually costs, but I, the last thing he suggested is that I go to healthcare.gov and look for other programs, which I did. And what I found was, yeah, for 10 to 20 times, you know, we're paying $30 a month now for the spouses, which is incredibly valuable, you know, it's an excellent value. But, okay, so next year, I'd be paying 10 to 20 times that amount for my spouse and getting insurance that has, you know, the city says deductible, $125 deductible. Well, when you go to the insurance from the healthcare.com, it's $7,300 deductible, $5,000 deductible. You're looking at, it's kind of like you had a really nice, nice deal, now you're buying a piece of junk to take its place, you know? The cost, the cost is going to be somewhere in the, at least, from what I could see, like $5,000 to $10,000 per spouse. And that's, that's, that's just not, not reasonable. And what I suggested, maybe not clear-
I'm sorry, Ms. I apologize, but your time is up. I apologize.
Okay. What I'm saying, there ought to be a middle ground. That's my last word.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Greetings. Steve Mohammed, 305 Alden. I want to ask if you all would take a copy of this? It's an invitation for-
Member of the city council as well as council president.
For an event we have coming up in a few days. And I'd like to just share some of the contents of the letter if you would allow me a few moments.
Thank you.
Greetings, community professional. For several years, we have watched as this country has undergone major transformations from the election of America's first black president, massive challenges with substance abuse and gun violence, to the most recent events in Charlottesville, highlighting the major divide that remains in the thinking of people. These kinds of concerns can produce anxiety and even fear, as uncertainties can dominate our forecast for tomorrow. Clearly, these emotions don't allow for understanding and clear, lucid thinking to take place. This can compound the challenges that already exist and compromise reasoning and forward thinking. Akron was the first city many years ago for former President Bill Clinton to host a conversation about race. While I had serious criticisms about the construct of this initiative, the Coming Together Project, it was clear that we needed real and deliberative dialogue. But to accomplish what? The objectives were and still are unclear. How will we get to a place where a consensus is truly reached on how we move forward in an effective manner, addressing the challenges and/or opportunities that are in front of us? We are responsible to develop the courage to heal. In 2013, we initiated a series of peace talks as well as writings, attempting to highlight and introduce a fearless young generation that is being criticized, even profiled. I believe that under these community symptoms lie people that feel isolated and even abandoned. Conversely, I was invited recently to a book study by a church group. The read was "The New Jim Crow" by Michelle Alexander. The average age of the group was 60 years, a mixture of men and women, 99% of which were white. I was amazed at how they were taken aback by the personal stories and accounts shared in the writing. Then they asked me, what can we do? I knew then that we were not talking enough to each other, and that true understanding can help us ask real and meaningful questions. I hope I can get through this in time. After hearing David Kennedy's interview on NPR featuring his book "Don't Shoot One Man, A Street Fellowship, and the End of Violence in the Inner City of America," cities of America, I felt that we could take these principles of gathering all facets of the community and have an honest dialogue, speaking to specific themes that affect everyone. We know that seated inside the problem are the solutions. The aforementioned concerns are not just political, religious, or financial. They speak to our humanity. We have to answer. We are the answer. Having said that, I'm hoping you'll be part of the execution of a true community conversation that will allow for real and deliberative dialogue, giving a face to the missing elements of our society and helping to humanize the fears that threaten to paralyze our creative genius.
I'm sorry, that is the time.
So you have the information-
I will make sure that they get in their mailboxes, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. We hope you all can attend. And if you can attend, come as citizens, not city council reps, okay? Because then the people can easily have a more effective interaction, and you can get a better read on what the thinking of Akron really is. December 9th, we'll see you guys there.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. And we will now set our meetings for next week. Rules Committee?
2:30.
2:30. Budget and Finance?
3:00.
3. Planning?
1:30.
1:30. Public Service? Councilwoman-
2:00.
2:00. Public Utilities?
2:30.
2:30. Public Safety?
2:15.
2:15. Action Rec?
2:15.
2:15. Housing?
3:30.
3:30. Health and Social Service?
2:30.
3:30. 2:30?
2:30.
2:30. She said, is that correct, 2:30? Economic Development?
2:45.
And Green Committee?
1.
1:00. Is there anything else to come before council for the good of council? Councilwoman Mosley Samples.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I know my colleague, Margot Somerville, put in an objection to the Haba Chi Express, 935 Brown Street. I'm not sure what has to happen in order for that location to be labeled as a nuisance, but today alone, I've gotten probably four calls, several emails about fights in the middle of the streets. I went back through and checked reports. Some may have been when it was called the spot before they transferred over to the Haba Chi Express, but since I've been on council, there's 29 reports, and I haven't been here that long, from discharges of firearms, assaults, liquor permit violations, shots fired, fights in the streets. This location at 935 Brown Street poses a safety concern for the residents in that neighborhood. We are very familiar with who runs that establishment, and I just wanted to rise to voice my concerns publicly and see what do we do to label that location a nuisance. And so we can, if we can look into that, whether it's public safety or prosecutor's office, something has to be done over there because bullets don't have names, and they don't have eyes, and they're over there shooting guns, and there's a lot of elderly people who live in that neighborhood who are scared out of their minds. And so whatever we can do to look into this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let Mr., if I have the name right, Mr. Gnome know that his concerns have been heard, I'm sure, by all of us, but it brings back to memories, when we made the decision on the, to change the city's health plan, we knew that it had an adverse effect on many of the retirees, but we also said that we would come back and take a look at it. Now that we're getting ready to come into budget season, I think, hearing his concerns as well as concerns of others who have come down, and I know some that I ran into the street, ran into in the street, I think would be, prove us to take another look at what we passed and see if there's anything we can do to address the concerns that have been shared with us as far as the expense that is costing the retirees. I know we've done some other cost-saving measures. I think it would be good if we just take a look at all of those. Earlier, I called and spoke with Holly, and it just brings to mind, many times, our constituents come down and they share information with us that they would like to have us address. And then we go and the normal course of business kicks in, and we, we address all the calls that we get personally, but collectively, they've come down to address us and ask us to address different concerns. And what I'm asking is, we need a process to be able to follow that and to be able to make sure that collectively we address those concerns. And so what I'd like to, for us to take a look at, one of the things that we had worked on, and I believe we're still working on, was moving towards a form of open government, where our legislative process can be followed. I see Mr. Buck here, he's been, and he's asked before, and others have asked, trying to follow the legislation so that they can have input before we actually vote on it. If we move towards open government process, and I believe Mr. Sarvich shared with me some of the information, we've invested close to $132,000 in getting it up. We should be close to where we could put our legislation online, but then not just our legislation, put a, sort of like a report card that we can follow collectively on how we address these concerns. Because, as I said, this isn't the first time that someone has come down, but I know we all get tied up in our regular business, but we need to find a way to make sure that we address the needs. The other thing is, I want to share a conversation I had earlier with my colleague, Mr. Sworowski, that kind of comes into line with some of the conversation that some of us heard when we were at the conference. And that is that, you know, the world we live in is rapidly changing, and technology is playing a big part of it. At the conference, there was a lot of emphasis on smart city. And I know we've had, we've passed legislation regarding smart cities, but I'm not sure what our overall smart city plan is. So what I'd like to ask, Madam Chair, is if we can get with the administration to see what our overall smart, smart city plan is. With us planning to upgrade our streets, upgrade our, our street lighting and other things, street lights are a big part of that smart city plan. How we do our roads is a big part of that smart city plan, infusing the technology that goes, goes along with that. And I say that because some of the other challenges that we've had, that we've had to address here, is just technology and how it impacts our economy. So I'm asking that, as we, again, go into the budget process and we prepare ourselves to be able to address some of these things, that we can have a meeting with, to get an understanding of that, so we'd be better prepared to address not just those upcoming needs, but some of the needs that come across during the public comment period as well, please.
So, Councilman Neal, just so I hear you correctly, you want to know what the city is doing with their smart city plan?
With our, with our smart city plan. So we have a total understanding, because some of the investment that we're going to make, a huge part of it should play in helping to build that infrastructure. to make, a huge part of it should play in helping to build that infrastructure.
So you just need, you want to know where the city is with their smart city plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Councilman Sworowski and I were able to go to a convention just about a month ago that was about, right here in Akron, on our smart city plan and about the streets and things, and there was, most of our, our administration was there, so I'm sure that they're prepared to give us an outline. And if you want to take the lead on the healthcare to see, to bring that forward, although I do know that for one year, they gave them a reprieve, that even though they said that the spouses would have to pay, they gave a year's reprieve. Am I correct, Mr. Gnome, so this will be your first year that you're actually going to be paying in for your wife?
Correct.
Correct. So you might want to take that into consideration as to if we're going to evaluate how well it's going. It hasn't been implemented yet because we came back and gave a reprieve a year.
I understand that, but when we did it, we said that we would come back and look at it after a year.
Right. So if you want to have that up going, I'm just giving you that piece that it really hasn't been implemented to the full extent yet.
I understand that, but we said we would give ourselves a year. Now we know what the ramifications are going to be because we've heard from our retirees coming to us with those things. So, I mean, I am working on, as the Public Utilities Chair, how we can provide relief on the water bill. I would, I don't think that's my spot.
Okay, who would you like to look into that, then?
Well, again, I think collectively as council, I don't know what committee that would fall under. It doesn't fall under Public Utilities, it doesn't fall under Park and Recreation.
You're just making a request, and you want someone to do it?
I'm asking for us to do it.
Okay. So you want me to create a committee to do that, then? Would you be willing to serve on the committee?
Yes, ma'am, I would.
Okay.
If the committee needs to be, I don't, did the legislation come under budget, or did it come under the rules? Whatever, whatever committee the legislation came under, perhaps we can work under that.
Perhaps, but I can also call an ad hoc committee to take a look at it. So if, and if you're willing to work on that, that'd be good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to come before council for the good of council?
Questions, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.